There were three items on the agenda: return to school planning, budget, and facilities use. So I'm going to return to return to school planning, we'll turn it over to Dr. Ryan and Esther. Don's going to manage the budget part and facilities use, the administration, and Patrick has some questions. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Ryan and Esther Asbell.
Thank you, Neil. I think that, you know, most recently in looking at today's email that I had to send out regarding two students who've also tested now positive for COVID-19, that we're not going to see the last of it. We're certainly not seeing the last of it in some of our other schools. What it's leading to is an issue with staff capacity and the ability to have a workforce to safely and adequately keep a school open. So with Main Street School, we did run into an issue where we were forced to move to remote instruction last Thursday. I want to thank the board for supporting our recommendation to be able to do that, to keep everybody safe and to keep down the number of possible transmissions that could have occurred in that school had we stayed open. Just for clarification, we're remaining on remote instruction through next week, right into the Christmas season. Conversely, Lincoln Street School has managed to keep COVID out. There have only been a few cases, a handful of cases. And I think that that shows that as well as Main Street was doing, sometimes all it takes is one small incident to create a cluster. And so we know just how fragile that that environment can be and just how quickly transmission can take take place. What we're seeing, particularly in our other schools, is the transition back and forth, obviously, is highly disruptive. And I think that that has had a significant effect on our family's patience with us in trying to keep our school open while at the same time trying to keep everybody safe. There's not been a fine balance there. We've not been able to be successful on either end. And, you know, we feel horribly about that, but we're in a position where we're not able to just fully have our students come back to school and guarantee that it's going to stay open. One of the ways to mitigate that that we're seeing around the state, as well as some other states that are surrounding New Hampshire, is this issue of imposing a 10-day quarantine at the conclusion of a long vacation. Some parents are not in agreement with it because naturally it takes away the opportunity for the student to return to school in person after, I think it's a 10-day vacation now, starting next next Thursday. What it's been doing, however, we saw this in some school districts after the Thanksgiving Day holiday, was it eliminated that unnecessary disruption due to somebody either receiving the transmission or getting COVID or getting sick with influenza, because there are still other illnesses out there, and then bringing that with them to school unwittingly, and then having transmission begin and ultimately having to transfer back into a remote instructional platform. So what we're recommending for Exeter schools, Lincoln Street included, because now we're also fully remote with the developmental preschool. We had an issue with the developmental preschool. And certainly, we want to protect all of our students and staff members there. So with all of our schools in Exeter, it's going to be our recommendation that we impose a 10-day quarantine at the conclusion of the holiday break, which would return all students and staff on our in-person schedule as it's been operating on January 14. It's a risk-reward proposal in that you do lose instructional days from January 4th to January 13th, but it's going to suppress, I think, the risk of losing even more days due to the disruption beyond January 14th through the month of January and into February. So that's where we're, that's where we are tonight. That's going to be our recommendation to the board. It's something that Esther and I have discussed at length. We've heard several families ask for that type of reentry. It's one that we proposed to the board this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Quick clarification. So it's returning on the 14th to the, you don't like the word, but the hybrid format, right? That is still still partial remote if you've chosen that. And then, right, it's the same as before, is it right?
That's correct. That's correct. I think Esther had a hand up that she wanted to add to or supplement.
I just want to, I wanted to clarify that the remote learning platform as it is right now for Main Street would be remote learning for all students starting January 4th, and then a transition day on the 13th. In our MOA with the teaching and para staff.
Okay, thank you. Now, Dr. Ryan, would you, how would you like to, what would you require or ask the board? Would you like us to file a motion or make a motion? Or would you like us to give you our consent verbally? How would you like to walk through this process tonight?
I think that based on, I'm sorry, Patty has a question.
Sorry. So what day is Main Street supposed to go back next week? What is the date?
It's not. It's, it's, it's out through until the new year.
So this is not returning until another 14 days after they were to go back on January?
I thought Main Street was going to go back for a couple of days and then join Lincoln Street and not come back until the 14th. My, my mistake. Thank you.
So, Dr. Ryan, what would you ask the board this evening?
There's no formal motion or action that needs to be taken by the board when it comes to the closure of the school. I would ask for consensus and support for our recommendation in that we'll have some families that will certainly not agree with our recommendation. We'll certainly want to be able to message and ensure our families that students are still going to be receiving instruction directly. Lincoln Street would remain in attendance until the break and then begin for the first 10 days on the other side of the new year with remote instruction. So that would be what I'd be asking the board this evening.
Right. So discussion. Don, would you like to start?
Um, I guess, in my, you know, I feel that it is important to keep the students home longer. We know that people are going to be visiting families and things over the weekend, over the holidays, as they did on Thanksgiving, which has been, you know, some of the challenges that we faced through this. I think a lot of parents have said to me, why are they going back so quickly? That said, we had expected or hoped that we'd been, would have been able to keep them in school, you know, up until Christmas in some fashion, which is just really not, not worked out. You know, we've sort of discussed this in at length for many, many, many months now. And I think the most important thing is the safety of everyone. So I'm in favor of keeping them out until the 14th, reminding families that there will always be a transition day as part of the memorandum of agreement that we have with our teachers and paraprofessionals. So anytime that even if there's remote, if someone's in full remote instruction, they will be off on that one day in between. That's the only way that they, that, you know, the agreement can be followed. And that, you know, unfortunately, I wish this wasn't the, I wish this wasn't a decision we had to make, but I think it's in the best interest and safety of the community.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, apologies that I was a few minutes late. I was coming from another Zoom meeting. Yeah, I'm in agreement. I joined late and, you know, I listened at the other board meeting, but I think it makes sense when we've seen how challenging it is for our communities to to shift from in-person to remote and back again. And that if we could just make that transition once with enough time for people, you know, quarantine or be safe after the holidays, that it would reduce sort of significant stress on the teachers and the young students in the school. And the parents will have time now to plan. It's not ideal. But I think the in-person and then having to grow remote because of the positive cases is actually a higher impact on our young students than it is to just stay remote until the 14th. So thanks.
Patrick?
So first of all, I just wanted to say something about the process in that I wanted to reaffirm a piece that David said. I don't, I don't think our board should be making a motion, which we're not, and we're not being asked to, to approve what the superintendent's office wants to do. I think it's their decision. I think they have a plan. We've told them before that we support their plan. But I also think it's in terms of the process, I do think it's helpful to get feedback. And, you know, that's what I, that's how I view what we're doing tonight. We're giving feedback. If that tweaks what the office wants to do, great. If they, in their professional judgment, feel that this is still in the best interest despite the feedback, they should feel empowered to make that decision. But I, I also, I think the feedback that you're hearing, though, is pretty in sync with what the proposal is or what the, what the administration is. And that, I think it makes a lot of sense. And I won't echo everything that's been said, but I, I agree with what's been said already. One other point I would make is just that we're in the middle of the toughest wave so far of this pandemic. And a number of schools, including colleges, are even, you know, going on remote until February. Phillips Exeter, which is in our town, is, is on remote until the middle of February. For that reason, they're not bringing any kids back to the dorms at all. So I think there's a heightened risk. I mean, numbers in New Hampshire jumped from 200 a day to 1,100 a day in terms of cases. And so for all those reasons, I think it makes sense. The other thing I really appreciate about what's happening with this process is that I know parents have really asked for receiving information as far in advance as possible so that they can plan. So we talked about the impact on the students, but part of the impact on the students is the impact on the families. So if parents can, you know, get some advance notice, they can work with their employers, they can work with their meetings, they can work to get coverage. So I think it's a really smart plan to make this sort of decision now and get the word out as quickly as possible. So I think it's a great plan.
Patty?
I am in lockstep with what the other board members have already said. I appreciate Patrick bringing to light the heightened peak that we're reaching here in New Hampshire. And I think we are making the right decision by our, by our young students. I'm in agreement.
Thanks, Patty. So I'll just add, I agree. I support your, your decision. I support this plan. And one of the things I admired very much about the administration's handling of this matter is its flexibility. So I would ask Dr. Ryan that if in the future you feel you need to extend even further as the pandemic continues to increase in New Hampshire, you know, be flexible and just maybe you need to extend it even further, perhaps. So thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I have to hop off to head off to the cooperative board meetings beginning at 6:00, but I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight Kaitlin Anglia's work that she's done as the school nurse at Main Street School. The number of cases, the professional manner in which she has handled herself, the level of detail and specificity in her contact tracing protocols, certainly working alongside Mr. Adler, has been second to none. By far, the easiest school that we have worked with when it comes to tracing. And again, we're almost 50 cases now. We would not be in a, as healthy a place as you are without Kaitlin's work. And I know she's on the call, and I just wanted to make sure that people heard what a fantastic job she's doing in support of the health and safety of our students and staff at Main Street. So with that, I will sign off, and I wish you all a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Ryan. Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the budget. Don, you are up.
Um, I think we've had, we, so we've had a few meetings about this already, gone through a lot of it, just to sort of highlight. Usually Molly's here who kind of runs through it for us. So, you know, overall, the budget is a 2.97% increase. Most of that being a 2.95% increase, most of that being contractual. The, the principals of administration have done a really, really fine job in trying to keep increases as flat as possible, shifting things around, making some adjustments to offset other items that weren't anticipated. I don't know if there's special things I should be highlighting right now, Esther, or you want to jump in? Go ahead. Thank you.
Sure. The biggest reason that I added it on to this agenda with Neil was just to make sure the board felt prepared that they had a plan for the public hearing coming up in January, our next board meeting. I know that we have the operating budget, we've had a couple, three or whatever meetings with that. And so I just need to know if you're gonna, if Don, you're going to be presenting the operating budget, if that's what's going to be decided, then I just wanted to set up a time to kind of go over whoever was going to handle and present that with some notes. And if you had any questions, so you felt prepared, as well as we haven't really talked about any additional warrants. Last year, you did have that special education expendable trust that came from, I think, let's see, for the sum of up to 70, I'm looking at last year's warrant, up to $75,000. And that came from the fund balance. So whatever was available up to 75 came from fund balance. So it didn't have an impact on the taxation rate. It wasn't raised above and beyond what you've already raised from this current budget. So I didn't know if the board, I sent you what our current trusts were at, if you were considering any other warrants to be added for things like trusts, the special ed trust. We have also the capital reserve trust. Those are the two, generally speaking, that the board considers adding funds to. We just would want to present that you're thinking about those warrants at the public hearing, if you are. So I wanted you all to have an opportunity to talk about that before the public hearing.
Right. Thank you, Esther. So I'm happy to talk about the operating budget, if that's helpful. Also, I think we had hoped going back, I think Renee's on the call, to continue to add to that special ed fund for, I can't remember if it was three years, or until we got to a certain balance, because that is such a
It was
fragile fund. Go ahead, Renee.
We talked about until we, I think there was a SEP fund of 250.
Okay.
Yeah. We were gonna, yeah, how much you added until we reached that amount.
So I wouldn't, I would like the board members to discuss if we continue to want to do that this year. I think it is helpful knowing how volatile that fund can be. Do you have any, Renee, any sort of coming down the pipeline, if you will, that we might need to know about? Is the 75,000 still a good amount, or?
I think 75 is still appropriate. We did level fund those lines, the out-of-district lines, which is the most expensive piece for special education. And those hold spots for two students that are currently in out-of-district placement. So if any other students came in or any other students needed to go in out-of-district, next year, we'd have to probably tap into that reserve fund. So I think 75 is appropriate, if we can do it.
Do we know how far we are into that fund specifically, Don? Was last year the first year of the 75,000? I feel like it was the second year.
Second year.
Okay, so, so that means $150,000 has been put towards the goal of 250,000.
So that sheet that Esther sent, it says, still has a 75 in there. It says 219. So will the other 75 go at the end of this year? And then it's for the following year? That we're, we're doing the warrant article for?
Yeah, it, it can probably go in now. They just had to wait till those MS-25s were signed, etc., before they put that money over. So maybe on the state end, hasn't given the final confirmation that we signed it in October.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll be at the end of this year, we'll be at 150,000 of our $250,000 goal. And that is for special education. That's unexpected if a child needs extra services that we haven't, that we didn't know about.
Correct.
As a large, okay, thank you. I support that.
Patty, Neil, Patrick?
I wanted
Go ahead.
I mean, my understanding is that it's primarily for now a district placement, because those are the things that are expensive. And we're trying to budget for them, but someone could move into the district, for example, someone could, their, you know, their, their level of need could change, someone could, you know, there's a variety of reasons why that will pop up and not be anticipated. But I, the only tweak I would have, I'm also in support of doing this another year, but since our goal is 250, you know, I might suggest that we just make it $100,000, we would get to that goal. We have 150, then we wouldn't have to, if we don't tap into it, then we wouldn't have this the following year. We would just have that amount that would just be in there and leave it at that. Or we could do it two years at $50,000. But the, but the only problem with doing that is that if we do tap into it this year, for some reason, it could be, half of the money could be gone, just like that. And then we budget for it in the following year. But we could, anyhow. So I would suggest maybe we do $100,000 unless there's something about that number that people think would be problematic.
As you, as you're saying that, Patrick, I'm sort of going through in my head and wondering, also agreeing with everything that you just said, but then also wondering in the middle of this, the pandemic that we're in, if 100,000 might not, not feel right. I'm not always sure, as much as we try to explain these things, how well the voters understand that this is only for funds that are, that are available at the end of the year from our previous budget, that would otherwise, it can't be spent, it would be returned to the taxpayers as part of their, their tax bill. But the overall percentage of it is very small. So I don't know, I'm curious. So I, I agree. And then I'm not sure at the same time. So I don't know what, if the rest of you want to add something in to see if we can kind of roundtable this. I certainly think we should have something, a warrant article for that. Not sure if we should stay with 75 or move it up. It'd be nice to have it done.
I would offer that, considering what Molly told us two meetings ago, how we have significant free cash flow likely, why not $100,000 and get it out of the way? I share your concern about the optics, but if the money's there, let's put it away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. So Renee, when you do your budgeting, you can only budget for the students that you know for sure that are in our district now that might be heading in that direction, or that definitely need to be going out of district?
I usually only fund or, or plan for if I anticipate a student, if I know a student next year would go out of district, I'd put it in the budget. The budget for next year is two students that are currently out of district, that would be out of district next year. So that's what I funded for, was what it's going to cost us to, to educate those two kiddos next year, if they stay out of district. And I have met with the families, and I anticipate them staying out of district for next year.
Okay, and they're covered by the current budget?
Right. But there's no room for it anymore.
So one student could totally absorb the 150 we have already, if an extra student were to hit that plateau or enter our school district?
150 would give you a high-need student out of district with transportation for a year.
Okay. Okay. I support taking the, the cash this year and, and bumping it up another 100,000.
100,000 total.
Yeah.
Just to, just to build on something that Neil said, I think that's, and I appreciate what he said, Don, which is why I tried to say, you know, I was thrown out as a question. But I think Neil's right, that I think the way that, the appropriate way to present this to the voters is that this is a year where we anticipate large reserves, and we can make a significant return to bring down the, the tax rate already. But we can also do some that will guard against having large increases, you know, in the future. So I, I think it's, I think $100,000 is fine. But if people felt strongly it'd need to be 75 or less, I, I'm not that, I don't feel that passionate about it.
I, I just have mixed feelings. I feel like there's so much need in our community, sort of separately, that I think the taxpayers could have a hard time with it. I'm thinking out loud. I, we, we had a plan. I know it would wrap it up and we would hit our goal. But I also think that this is a warrant article that the school board might continue to fund as soon as it, you know, continue to request, as soon as those funds get used. I hesitate with the amount we're already asking in the increase, which I know is separate from this, but I just, I'm a bit cautious.
Yeah, I would say I'm feeling that caution as well, even though I agree. I, I don't know. I just think there's so much going on right now. We should err on the side of, of treading lightly.
I'm fine with it being 75,000. I mean, just, just to be clear, for the purposes of what Sarah brought up about our plan, warrant articles are still, we have to make a new one each year. So nothing about the past votes bound us to what we do this year. But I understand, and whether it's phrased as optics, or, I don't know, attention to the need that's out there, there is something that's different about when you add that extra zero behind a number. It's, it's, it is bigger. It's not 900, you know, or not 99,000, we're making a, you know, a 33% increase in terms of what we've done in the past. It's a significant increase for that. Even though it does say in the warrant article, there's no tax impact, some people just see the number and focus on that. So I think it makes sense just to, I definitely think we should do it, but I'm, I'm fine with 75,000.
Okay. Don, are we good?
Yeah, I think I would prefer to stay with 75,000. I don't know if we need to make a motion or what. I just think, I just think it's a little bit easier and And stress the importance is because, you know, to find $75,000 in the budget to pay for one of these or $150,000 when they come up out of nowhere is very difficult. But that said, I don't know if we need to make a motion or if anyone wants to have further discussion.
Esther, do we need a motion for this?
No, I just, I, my, just by consensus, thumbs up, just so I can prepare you, Dawn, for the public meeting to present the official, you know, approval will be after the public meeting, and that's when you make an approval of the entire budget as, as presented, after you make any other adjustments. So you still might get public input and decide to make other changes. And that's the purpose of the process, really. So just as of now, for purposes of presenting at the public hearing, thumbs up for 75. It seems like that was the consensus to at least talk about at the public hearing. Yes.
Are there any other warrant articles? Is that the only?
No, the only additional one last year was the teacher contract. And of course, that passed. Thank you, everyone who is voting and supporting our teachers. And so we do not have any other additional articles at this time. That's not to say there always can be a petition from citizens petition. And that's before, you know, there's, RSA is to define that. And that's why our meeting in January is actually, I think the, let me look on my calendar here. It allows the timeline for any public petitions to be put forth. So that would be, unless the board wants to add anything additional, that's also, you can do that. So at this time, it's the operating budget and now the special ed expendable trust.
And Dawn, you're gonna handle both of those?
I can, or one of the other board members can handle one of them. If, I mean, normally we try to take turns, I think, over the years, but, but either way, doesn't, would anyone like to speak to the special ed trust? Or the, or the budget for that matter?
If you want support doing it, so you don't do both, I mean, I'm happy to support you in, in one or the other.
Sure. Which would you prefer to do, Sarah?
I could do the special education trust. I feel like I've listened carefully to that and could, could present that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
One of the other things we've done in the past too is, one of the board members has presented something and then has asked the rest of the board if any of the board members would like to add anything else before we even open. No one should feel like they're on their own with this. We'll, we'll get it all, all the information.
Yeah, that's a good reminder. Thank you.
All right, we're good. One question. The Wheelwright Trust, Esther, is, is that, is that the balance? I thought we spent 50 of it. Is that not right? It says 155.
Yeah, I, I don't want to say it is correct, because I know that this has been in flux a little bit. And I had this from, in my, inside my notebook, just to give you the information. So it has November 30th, 2020, but I, I don't want to say that it's 100% updated.
Okay, so, facilities use is the last, sorry. Sorry, Deanna?
Some of the money hasn't been spent yet, so that might be right, because some people couldn't use it yet because of COVID. Libraries weren't made and stuff, so maybe that balance is right.
Thank you. Esther, facilities use, please.
Esther, you're muted. Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you for that. So I had put a information straw poll out to the board about a request, because I forgot to bring it up at our last meeting. And thank you, Patrick, for bringing it to my attention that I should not do that. I should follow the RSA. So I did call Bear Christina, as Patrick referenced in an email to, I believe, Neil and I, that really straw poll votes should be used for, or straw polls should be used for trying to determine perhaps a date to have a meeting to talk about something, or something as general as that, nothing that's really any decision decision. So I wanted to put that on the agenda and have it as soon as possible, because I wanted to ensure that the board had time to discuss the request to use the building. Exeter Parks and Recs wanted to use it for their recreational basketball student or child recreation basketball program starting early January. And I know the board, we had talked about the no visitor policy. That's what we've been standing by. I, after given the things we've talked about today and continuing to extend that remote, the extra 10 days, and with the rates so high, I would recommend that we continue with that strict no visitors policy and try to make sure that we can keep our schools open when we do open them after that January 13th date. So that's my recommendation, is to continue that. And that no visitor policy would extend to ones kids aren't in school and others who wouldn't be having the public use our schools on Saturday.
Thanks, Esther.
Sure.
Discussion, folks. I, I agree with Esther. Patrick?
I, so the, I wanted to say a couple of things. Thank you, Esther, for bringing this up. First of all, I, I would say, similar to the proposal or the discussion we have with David, this is, I really see this as something that's your decision to make, you and the principals and the superintendent. There's a lot of usage that happens in our building and, and the board doesn't sign off on all the usage. It just, we just don't. I understand in this case, based on your prior note, the superintendent said that you would bring it to the board. So, you know, so of, of course, we're here to consider anything you want us to consider and give you feedback, but I don't want you to feel like you're now ceding those decisions to the board, because I, I just think that's not expedient. But of course, we'll give you feedback. And my feedback is that I, I think on the one hand, we really should be supporting community organizations. We have a long history of doing that. The Junior League in particular is one that we've not just given field space to, but we've even helped build stands. We've, you know, given money that was out of the kindergarten project, where we are very committed to the community, because these, particularly the recreation programs benefit our own kids. So I, I think I, I wouldn't want us to, anyone to misconstrue the message that we somehow don't support recreation sports in our kids, because we do. But I, you know, there, the first part of this meeting, meeting highlighted why the superintendent's office is, and the principals are, you know, making a plan to keep the schools closed for a while. It's just, it's just at a really unusual time. And given where we are, I don't think it's advisable. So I support your, your thinking on this, Esther. I, I don't think it makes sense. But I, I think it's important that we also just be really clear that please come back, please propose again to do this when things calm down. Who knows what the spring will hold or the summer or the fall. But we, we are open to sharing our resources with some of these community groups, particularly, you know, Parks and Recreation and other groups.
Dawn, Sarah, Patty?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I, I also, normally, we are extremely supportive of our building use and letting people use it for all, all sorts of things. I know how important the Parks and Rec Department is to our community and how much the, our, our students and family members enjoy those, those types of programs. But what I also want to echo is that the, the people who run those programs are volunteers, they are parents. Right now, in the middle of this pandemic, we can't, those are not people that are employees of the SAU or Main Street School or Lincoln Street School and have our safety protocols to follow. So I think it's very, very risky to do that. And, you know, we just, we need to keep the schools as safe as possible. And as unfortunate as it is, I just, I, I, I don't support having them in the building right now. Anyone else, no visitor policy, I think, is just the best, even though it's terrible. But that's where we are.
As a parent who has enjoyed the indoor basketball, and we are missing it greatly, both our priority as well as my own personal family's priority, is in the education of our kids and our students and the safety of our staff. I fully support keeping the, the doors closed to outside visitors.
Sarah?
Yeah, and I would just include that we're not singling out Exeter Rec. You know, my children have participated in the Boy Scout program. Lincoln Street School has been so generous to let us use the cafeteria for that, or I don't have girls, but I know certainly girls who have done Girls on the Run. And there's just, the school's been very generous. And I think that our goal is to get back to that place as soon as possible. But as Patty says, we need to secure the location for education first, and then these other things will fall in line as soon as we can do it. But I don't, I just want to make the point that we're not singling out one particular group.
The only thing I would add is, you know, looking at some charts of infection rates in New Hampshire, it's genuinely scary and it's gonna get worse. So I agree with you. Esther, I think you have what you needed, which is, I think, the consensus of the board, right?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the conversation.
So I don't, there's nothing else we can talk about, so I think we're done. All right, right on. Everyone stay safe. We don't have to have a motion. Yeah, we do actually, we have to, a motion to go to adjourn, right? So motion or adjourn. Is there a second? Dawn Bones?
Hi.
Sarah Edwards?
Hi.
Patrick McDade? Patty Soret?
Hi.
Will Blankensai, stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Bye, everybody.